We're five minutes late. It is Wednesday, September 29th, 2021. It is 7:05 PM and we are having a joint or concurrent meeting of the three boards of the town of New Canaan, the Board of Selectmen, the Town Council, and the Board of Finance. And I will begin by taking the role of the Board of Selectmen. Kevin Moynihan is here. Nick Williams?
Here.
Kathleen Corbett?
Here.
And I would ask John to take the role for, or Rich, how are you going to take the role for Town Council?
Yep. For Town Council, Penny Young?
Here.
Steve Carl?
Yeah.
John Engel?
Here.
Sven England?
Here.
Christina Ross?
Here.
Tom Butterworth?
Here.
Liz Donovan? She's, she was gonna go by soon. That's right. Rich Townsend, here. Mike Morrow? Robin Bates-Mason?
Here.
Mark Dzimski?
Here.
Maria Notton?
Here.
Okay. Okay, we have a, we have a quorum.
And Judy?
Judy for the Board of Finance, please.
Neil Butler?
Here.
Judy Neville? Tom Shulte?
Is Tom on?
Hey Carol?
Here.
Here.
Oh, I don't know.
Nineteen.
He's here.
Maria Wygar?
She'll be late.
Robert Hamon? Anne Spalding?
Okay, I would also note, we have an attendance Bill Walbert, our co-chairman of our Police Department Building Committee. We have our Police Chief, Leon Karlikowski, our Chairman of our Police Commission, Paul Foley, Andrew Walsh, Captain Andrew Walsh, and Deputy Chief John DiFederico. And we have some other members of the Building Committee. And we have two architects here, two architecture firms. So I think we have everyone accounted for. We will get underway. I will make just an opening remark that tonight we start the process for deciding what we should do to modernize our police facilities. The deficiencies, our current Police Department building are well documented and well known. Six months ago, we started the study process. We hired two of the leading police architecture firms in the Northeast. Jukuski Humes Associates and Castle Booze and Associates. Brian Humes of JHA is here tonight to present the option of renovating as new the current Police Department building, or to demolishing the current building and building a new building at 174 South Avenue. Chuck Booze and Eric Royce of KBA have studied possible alternatives to town-owned properties to build a new Police Department building somewhere on town-owned property. The current PD building is a 93-year-old former Canaan High School that was repurposed to be a Police Department in, I think, 1981. It has outlived its purpose and the guiding principle we should be guided by tonight is what is the best solution for our police force. Tonight is a night to listen, not to ask questions of the architects and of our Police Commissioner and Police Department, but not to debate or advocate. That will be for meetings in October of the Town Council and the Board of Finance. And with that, I would first of all invite Brian Humes to come forward and begin the presentation on renovation as new at the current location or building a new building at the current location. Welcome, Brian. I missed one person. Let me, Stuart Salabini, our former Police Commissioner Chairman, is here. And Stuart's an advisor with the Police Department Building Committee. Excuse me, Brian.
When Kevin sat there last night, I had difficulty hearing him. You should pull one of those microphones closer to you.
Not that.
Trap door opens, you go, you disappear. It's not good. It's a whole thing.
Not that one.
Try to share a screen.
I should also mention Joe Zagremski of the Public Works Department is our lead staff person on this with Tiger Man. And You can minimize that right column. You see up at the top, there's three bars. You can check the one.
It's okay now.
There you go.
Thank you. Just for introductions again, I'm Brian Humes representing Jukuski Humes Architects. We are an architectural firm located in Berlin, Connecticut. And we specialize in public safety facility design. We started the firm in 1996. My partner and I started with a concentration on municipal architecture with a specialty in public safety. And in 1996, I was asked to show some examples of what we've done. So these two boards just represent our work since 1996 in the sector of police and public safety. You see, majority of our work is Connecticut-based, but we also have work throughout Massachusetts. And our work has been concentrated on this specialty. Not only do we have specialty in public safety design, we have some knowledge of work in New Canaan. So our involvement in New Canaan has been for the last 15 years working in and around the 174 South Avenue property. In 2006 to 2008, we renovated the second floor of the Police Department. But at that time, our renovations were to relieve working space when the Town Hall was going to be renovated. It was not to improve the working conditions of the Police Department, but it was to provide swing space for town use during the Town Hall renovation project. So we are familiar with the building that we did renovate it. We did provide an elevator. The elevator shaft was there, but we did put in a new elevator in 2008 to bring public from the main level to the second floor. It also goes to the lower level of the Police Department. In 2007 and 2009, we were the architects for the new EMS facility, which sits just adjacent to the Police Department. So we have that knowledge of the site, and that was a building that was, existing building that was removed from the site, and a new building was constructed for the EMS facility. The other improvements that we've made to the New Canaan Police Department was a new boiler and boiler replacements in 2006. We did roof repairs in 2006 to a slate roof. That roof has since been removed and replaced with entirely new roof since 2006. We did interior renovation options in 2019 based on a space needs assessment. And that space needs assessment for the PD was in 2018, and it was this document. So we were familiar with what the needs were of the department since 2018. So that brings us to now 2021. And in 2021, we were tasked by the town of New Canaan to look at the 174 South Avenue site to primarily look at the potential for renovation or potential for new construction on that site. Our scope did not go beyond 174 South Avenue. But we were tasked with three options. Option A was to renovate the current Police Headquarters and include remediation costs, firearms training range, off-site relocation for what at that time we thought was, could be two years, and to evaluate maintaining full functioning of the adjacent EMS building. And I'll go into that in a little bit more detail as to why that's important to add to that option A. Option B. Option B for us was to demolish all or part of the current Police Headquarters. The existing facade could be preserved or demolished, but an entirely new structure be constructed on that South Avenue site. The South Avenue Cottage, which is a building to the rear of the site, was to remain. And then the parking in the rear of the building could be surface parking or covered parking. So that's option B. Option C, in our original design agreement, was to look at if a new headquarters could be constructed behind the existing building. The South Avenue Cottage could be removed or replaced, and then you could repurpose or resell the existing building. It would be up to you. So remember, option A is renovation schemes. Option B would be demolish and build new. And option C would be a new headquarters, adding a structure to the existing site. So that was early March. The design agreement was initiated and we started work in March. The project timeline shows that we started in March by visiting the site and reviewing the conditions with the, at the PD and the EMS. We wanted to confirm that what we had for information was accurate and it was reliable and we could proceed forward with the information that we had. So we were interested in both the PD and the EMS to keep them both functioning and both operational. By the end of April, we had an option A scheme that was ready for presentation and ready for comment. We came down and presented option A to the Police Department. We also were made aware of Irwin Park property town-owned facility, which has the potential for swing space. Has been used for swing space in the past when the Town Hall was renovated. It may have potential for assisting the Police Department if they need to relocate or obtain swing space for a renovation that happens on South Avenue. May 7th. On May 7th, we reviewed the progress that we had with option A, the renovation scheme. We did review that with Town Staff. We discussed possible alternatives for the option B and C. And then in early May, the option C was found to be a viable option to proceed with. Option C was adding a building to the existing infrastructure that you have on South Avenue and leaving the existing building that was there. So the option C, for many reasons, some of it being available land area, concentration of uses, the potential for lot coverage, not meeting planning and zoning requirements for use of the lot, and the operation of the EMS facility were all contributing factors that seemed to make the option C available, not to be a viable option. It was agreed in May that we would take option C off the table for considerations. So starting from that point in May 7th, we were now for option A in moving forward with option B. At the May 12th meeting, we had a follow-up discussion and we had three things that were brought up for consideration. We were talking about option A, we were talking about renovation, and they were asking questions of me of, will this get replaced? Will that get replaced? Will the plumbing get replaced? Will the mechanicals? You know, what does renovation mean? What do we expect in a renovation? So we utilized the renovate as new concept. It's a concept that's been utilized for schools. And renovate as new is a concept that I'll go into a little bit later, but the renovate as new concept is what we were talking about for the Police Department. We gave examples of projects that we've done in our firm that we renovate as new. We've given examples from our firm where we renovate while the building's occupied. We've given examples where we renovate where the building is vacated. And we've given options where new facilities were constructed. The Building Committee asked for potential sites, and they did go and look at two projects that were relatively local. One was Darien Police Department that we completed some time ago, and Darien was a renovate while occupied. But we doubled the size of Darien PD while the PD still remained on site. And then they went to North Haven, a recently completed PD that was renovate while vacated. North Haven moved across the street, the entire site was vacated, and then the renovations took place. The Police Department then occupied the project when it was totally completed. So those two options were toured by the Building Committee. We also recommended an envelope consultant. And an envelope consultant would be coming down to look at the exterior envelope of the building, the masonry and the limestone, particularly because we didn't want to renovate a building that we felt didn't have the right expectancy of a new building. We wanted to make sure the masonry and limestone was intact and viable for a renovation. And we recommended a professional cost estimator. Look at our option A solution. And the most accurate professional cost. All those things were encouraged and the town did follow through on those recommendations. On May 19th, they contracted directly with FB Consulting, a professional cost estimating firm that we've had experience with for a number of years, performed a professional cost estimate for the option A that we were presenting. They also utilized the firm of Armani Restoration and a company called Prostaco to come down and do masonry restoration test, masonry and limestone testing on the existing building to give a professional contractor's opinion on the condition of the building. That brings us up to June, where we did receive a professional cost estimate. And also in June 21st, we did receive the masonry inspection and testing results. Also in July, we forwarded a square foot comparison chart, which compared our renovation scheme back to what was stated as the needs of the department. Was the plan meeting, was the stated intent of the Police Department for their future needs. And when I say future, this looks out about 20-year growth and 20-year potential for the PD. So there is some growth built into a needs assessment. But how did our plan compare to what this stated needs for the department? July, we updated the cost estimate based on some comments that we received. And the option B estimate was also further defined. For option B, we were taking the concept of adding a 30,000 square foot building, tearing down what's currently on South Avenue, replacing it with a 30,000 square foot new construction. And you'll see, you'll see further how that works on the site. And on the end of July, we revised our presentation and we, now we presented option A1 and option A2. This is where it's, it's important to understand where we've tweaked our design agreements slightly. A1 is renovate while occupied. We've also brought this to an A2 option to renovate while vacated. The town has options now, and we've put costs together for those options. And the option B is still on the table to be presented for our new 30,000 square foot Police Department. That would have to be done while vacated because you'd have to tear down the building that's there, move everybody offsite, and then build the building, move them back when occupied. Existing site conditions are important to understand. And when you're looking at the site, the South Avenue is to the left of the slide, goes north-south. North is up on this plan, and the front of the building faces east.
West.
West. Front of the face, front of the building faces west. All of the green lines that you see on this are utility lines that are underground, serving stormwater, electrical, fire service, water service, storm drainage. All the green lines are independent lines that go to buildings that are on the site. But we also have red lines. And the red lines is a side connection from the EMS facility to the existing Police Department. The EMS facility is not a standalone facility on that site as far as utilities are concerned. The EMS facility is getting its emergency power from the Police Department's generator, for instance. All of the communication lines and control lines are going from the EMS facility to antennas that are in the attic of the Police Department. The sanitary lines for the EMS are tied to the sanitary lines at the Police Department. So in this case, if we're removing or altering the existing Police Department, we need to supplement those utilities to the EMS facility. We can't take these as independent buildings, not related to each other and connected to each other for its utilities and/or communication needs. These two buildings are connected. So it's important to note this connection in anything you're going to be looking to do on this site. We can easily say we could just provide the EMS facility with a new generator. But we'd also have to provide EMS with heating, because all of the heating is coming from the Police Department boilers right now. All of the air conditioning is standalone for the EMS, but heating lines come from the Police Department. Communications would have to be brought over to EMS, and sanitary lines would have to be provided for an entire sanitary connection back to South Avenue. Something that when we built EMS was just an easier connection to make to the PD, and then the PD discharges to South Avenue. So it's important to note this important tie and this important connection that we have to maintain on South Avenue. And renovate as new is the concept that I talked about earlier. Renovate as new was, I just wanted to help you as a committee understand what renovate as new is. It is a term that's used in school constructions, or if you've done school renovations, you may be familiar with renovate as new. But its definition is a project that results in a renovated facility taking on a useful life comparable to that of a new facility in which will cost less than building a new facility. It's comparable to that of a new facility, but will cost less than a new facility. The entire facility will be brought into 100% compliance with codes and accessibility requirements. And upon completion, the renovated facility will have a useful life for continued operation comparable to that of a new facility. And it's bought up greater than 50 years would be what the renovated will, facility will have a useful life. It will not compromise the structural integrity of the existing building, and all of the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire protection systems will have a useful life of 20 years or that comparable to a new system of less than 20 years. Say, for instance, light fixtures go in the facility. Whether I put new light fixtures in a renovated facility or a new light fixture in a new facility, it's going to last the same. Those systems have live systems that are going to be comparable to a new facility. So this is what the level of renovation would be if we're talking about doing something to the existing building. Now, for what are we looking to do on the site? The existing police facility for a renovated facility obviously would remain. We would be adding a small addition to the lower right corner of the police facility. We had already added the garage addition to the upper right corner. We're adding a similar addition to the lower right corner. The parking, we have 18 cars that would be located under a carport structure or covering 18 fleet vehicles. That carport would be set up for photovoltaic arrays if the potential, if you want to take the advantage of solar carports. And behind the carport, we're proposing a standalone firearms pistol range, firearms training range of six lanes. The site there does have some slight differential between an upper lot and a lower lot. We're looking to essentially bury the building into the bank of the slope. There's some advantages of doing a firearms training range as a separate facility to the existing building, and primarily it's because of noise abatement and vibrations from firearms. It's very hard to control with it, if it's within a building. This, we're providing it on-site, but as a separate structure. Still get the Police Department the capability for training and doing all of their firearms training on-site in a standalone firearms training facility. The other thing we would be doing on this site is providing some site access control to the rear lot. From the upper lot, we still have the public parking in the front of the building, but access to the rear lot would be through access control gates. And the access control would restrict the back parking to only fleet vehicles. EMS staff, EMS egress and Police Department vehicle egress would not be restricted. It would not have access control on egress routes, only access control to that rear lot. Option A1 and A2 are similar because option A1 and A2 are both how we're looking to renovate the existing building. I know the plan is small. I try to have some color on it. But this is starting with the upper floor. We have a three-story scheme, starting with the upper floor. On the area to the upper left would be new detective bureau on the upper floor. In the teal color, in the upper right, we have training facilities for simulated firearm training and for combatant training for the Police Department. And on the lower part of the plan is all the new administrative offices. Chiefs of Police, Deputy Chief, Captain, Administrative Reception, and Administrative Conference Rooms. When we left this project in 2008, this was the floor that was left vacated for Town Staff. Our concept here is to move the detectives that are on this floor currently, move them to Irwin Park. That would leave this floor now vacant the same way we left it in 2008. Contractors could have access to this floor, perform the renovations in a phased approach.
All right, could I just ask, and the chief, the total staff on that floor for detectives currently?
The main floor, there are areas of the department that have recently been renovated, and one of those areas that's been renovated is right in the middle of the plan in red, and that's their dispatch center. You spent a lot of money and investment in renovating that dispatch center, and we're not looking to change that design at all. We're leaving dispatch center as an area not in scope for renovations. They could continue to utilize that concept of communication. And in the front, the public still have access to the main door, but the area on the front left is a training classroom. On the front right, we're incorporating a new emergency operations center, which could be used as a secondary meeting room for use by the Police Department. New handicapped accessible restrooms would be incorporated for public. And bullet resistance would be incorporated between areas of public and police staff. Records areas would remain in its current location. The rear of the plan would be supplemented for patrol staff, primarily roll call, lieutenants, patrol sergeants, day room, professional training, and a PBA union office. Also on this floor would be offices for accreditation, a break room, a bunk room, and the area in yellow is for information technology data servers.
And access up to the roof of the new addition.
The new addition is in the upper right. We are providing some outdoor space. Outdoor space on this site Outdoor space on this site is of a premium, really. There's really no place to go out and have outdoor experience, other than standing in the parking lot. But what we did, the EMS, if you're familiar with EMS, is off the rear of that floor. We did provide some outdoor space. And I think it's helped for EMS. I think it would be an asset for the police department to have a place where they have some outdoor space. So we did add some outdoor space on the upper right. And what that outdoor space is, is just the roof of what was being added, which is the physical training room on the lower floor. Areas in blue is areas of physical training, female locker rooms, male locker rooms. The area in orange is all of your Sally Court prisoner processing detention areas that would all be renovated. And new cells would be installed. The areas in green would be all areas of evidence processing, evidence storage. And it would now combine into one location, meeting all your accreditation requirements. State and national accreditation for evidence handling. The purple area is the existing garage. And in the lower left, it's the existing boiler rooms, mechanical rooms, and fire service. Those areas would remain and not be renovated. So how would we pull this off if we were to renovate while occupied? Something was done before. It's something we put a lot of thought into. And it's something that we wouldn't recommend lightly, although it would be an inconvenience at times for the police department. We feel confident that it can be accomplished. The reason that we feel it can be accomplished is the way we left it when we were here in 2008. You know, it was a vacant floor. That gives a lot of swing space potential for this. The police department, while they are now occupying all floors, relocating those 10 staff off that floor to Irwin Park for the duration of the construction, gives that swing space back to the contractors for their use. But we've put together a three-phase option for renovation. Anything that you see has a 1 on it would be on phase one. So the upper floor is all a phase one construction project. Phase three, if you see a 3, that would be coming back at the end of the project, just doing corridors and refining the plan as far as renovating corridors. On the main floor, you see a lot of 2s. That would be your phase two approach. The 1 in the upper right is because we're building the physical training room during phase one, so that outdoor space gets done during phase one. The rest of this floor is phase two. During phase two, there would have to be some relocation of public access and relocation of dispatch. And lower-level relocation of prisoner processing detention. The department has had discussions with Darien and police department, while nothing is formalized. It has been discussions about the potential for using Darien as swing space during phase two. They have the potential to handle additional dispatchers. They have the potential to handle detention and prisoner processing. So this would be done on off-site during phase two, and we see that about a four to five month duration. On the lower level, we have some phase one work, which is a physical training addition. Phase one would be establishing the male locker room. Once those are done, they can be occupied, giving room for phase two renovations for that Sally Court and prisoner processing. That function would again go to another agency. Phase three would be the evidence area in the green. So this three-phased approach has been reviewed and analyzed. The police department feel this would give them what they're looking for, and they could work around the disturbances of construction. We talked about a square footage comparison. We have three columns that we compared this project to. One was a 2006 existing square footage. When we left the facility in 2006, the police department was occupying 21,900 square feet. When we did the space needs assessment in 2018, we were projecting a need of 24,500 square feet. But this did not include a firearms training. The plan that I presented to you right now for A1 and A2 provides 30,500 square feet for the police department to utilize. The existing building is 29,485. The addition on the lower level is another 1,020. And the firearms training range would add another 2730 square feet to the plan. So you can see a significant increase from 2006 to what we would be providing in 2021 of over 10,000, about 10,000 square feet of new space. We also have itemized each line to say, in has the June 2021 plan accomplished the objectives of the 2018 needs assessment? And how does it compare back to the 2006 existing conditions? All of this was presented to the building committee and the police department. Just some highlights of the A1 scheme. It improves the planned functions and efficiencies. There's no relocation of patrol functions and administration for the duration of the construction. They would stay onsite. They would just shuffle around. Detectives and storage would go to Irwin Park for 18 months. Dispatch would be at Darien. Prisoner processing would be at Darien. Again, this is just a concept that's been discussed. Each agency feels that it could be accomplished. We're going to take care of all the existing building conditions for waterproofing, cupola windows, exterior envelope. And we see this project in about 16 to 17 months in duration. Firearms training range will be a separate facility. You have a carport for 18 vehicles, and you have access control for the back lot. Something's changed in option A2, because while you're vacated, now we need to find space. No longer Irwin Park, that can accommodate the entire department. The duration of the construction now goes to 18 months. We anticipate the need for 15,000 square feet of space to get the police department relocated. So we see 10,000 square feet can be provided for town space. But another 5,000 square feet may have to require lease space within the community to provide. And that lease space would be for a duration of about 18 months. Darien would not be utilized for three to four months, but with Darien would be utilized for 18 months. There's a cost to that. And the fit-out would have to be done for the temporary space. So if you lease space, you'd have to fit it out. Irwin Park would have to have some fit-out. We can make that usable for the department. But all of the work on the existing building would be similar. We just wouldn't split it into three phases. The contractor would have one phase. So that instead of 16 to 17 months, the construction duration now goes to 14 to 15 months. So it's about a three-month savings in the construction if they don't have to pay it. We're still providing a training range. We're still providing the carport. We're still providing access control. I don't want to go into a lot of details about this exterior masonry view. I just want to let you know that it was done. It came back very favorable. I can read the first sentence of the report. "After reviewing the new Canaan police station located at 174 South Avenue, I found the exterior of the building to be in good condition." This came from a contractor who specializes in this. He gave a couple of examples of what should be done to improve. Those improvement suggestions were put into the cost estimate. But they were minor, like caulking around openings. It was really a favorable report. The next thing that was done was called a Ryland test. To test the porosity of the brick. Was it the brick porous or not porous? And this really has to do with wind-driven rain. If you have wind-driven rain against a building, that's when the potential for the moisture to get into the brick. If the grain is falling vertically, the brick's not impacted. A wind-driven rain, so they put this device against the masonry, fill it up with 5 milliliters of water, and see how fast the water disappears. A normal test, you'd lose 1 milliliter of water in 20 minutes. On New Canaan, we lost 5 milliliters of water in 10 seconds, which means the brick is very porous. It doesn't mean the brick is in bad shape. It just means the type of brick that was utilized to build that building is porous. So in the result, they did recommend a water repellent to correct that porosity. And there are products available that this has a service life of 10 years. So it's not something that has to be done every year. It's a 10-year solution. And this was recommended. This was put into the cost estimate that you're going to see. We also had hazmat testing done. Again, we want to know what's the impact of hazardous materials in the existing building. Fussin' O'Neil just presented this report in favorable terms of there's not a lot of respect to see in that building because of renovations that have been done. They estimated about $65,000 worth of abatement and remediation for things that were found within the building, whether it's PCB, caulking, floor tile. But it's not a significant number in the show of the project. Now, we want to get to costs. We've all been waiting. That's scope. Now we're going to talk about costs. This is the summary sheet of the professional cost estimate that was done for A1. It's been broken down into divisions of construction, and it's broken down into costs. The cost estimator was nice enough to break it down into what's the cost of the existing building renovations? 7.7 million. What's the cost of the physical training addition, which includes the outdoor space on top of it? Just over $600,000. The pistol range building, standalone building, is $2.3 million. That includes all of the range equipment, range ventilation, cost of the construction, soup to nuts for constructing the firing range. Site improvements was just over 300,000, and the carport was just under 300,000. It was the entire carport. So you have an itemized list of all of the components. It brings the total cost to 11,292. And on the bottom of the sheet, there's an option A2 B. This is if that three-month duration was anticipated for vacating the building. There would be a construction savings of estimated at $230,000. That's the hard costs. This represents hard costs. With every total project budget that you put together, you're anticipating hard costs, soft costs, and project contingencies. Soft costs, there anything, there's a list here of what typical soft costs are. Their fees, their furniture, construction management fees. This isn't an all-inclusive list. It's just some of the things that this project has to anticipate. And because there are a lot of variables in this, we use the range. Between 20 to 30% of the hard costs would represent soft costs for a project. This is kind of an industry standard. At 20%, we use a 20 to 30% range. And an owner's project contingency, this is for unknowns, unidentified, or unanticipated. We've also utilized the range of 10 to 15% on this line. So if you take those buckets, looking at our option A1, our hard costs were 11,292. We have a range of soft costs between 2.2 and 3.3. And we have a range of contingencies between 1.1 and 1.7, giving up a total project range of 14,680 to 16,375. That has to get further defined when work progresses beyond what we've done in this study, but we want to be realistic about the main costs. If A2 was enacted, we have to add two other components to this. And one of the components is the owner's relocation cost to get him off the site. We have to also add a contingency for that relocation cost, because there's a lot of unknowns with that. We talked about lease space. We talked about fit-out. We talked about a lot of things that we still have to. Two other things that we have to incorporate. Did have a professional cost estimator look at what the budget would be to relocate off-site. It was estimated at just about $1.5 million, using some allowances, using some assumptions, and looking at temporary off-site locations at Darien. And while that may come at a convenience, relocating to Darien was adding about $135,000 to the project, because the police department is still responsible for going there and taking care of anybody brought to their facility. Or there has, there may be costs for relocation of communications, other associated costs to get Darien to assist. The $1.5 million, we did look at the budget here in a similar manner. We deducted the $230,000 in construction costs for the hard costs that I showed you earlier. So your hard costs are now down to just over 11 million. But adding the relocation and a contingency brings this budget to between 16,1 and 7 and 18. And option B is demolish what you have, build new on this site. I think I hit on a lot of these highlights already when I went through the earlier presentation. But we would take down the existing building and put back 30,000 square feet in the exact same space. The best location on the site for a building would go back in the same space. It doesn't architecturally have to mimic what's there. It could be, if you like, the iconic architecture that's there. But everything would now be. 30,000 square feet was looked at as the target number based on needs assessments and based on the renovation plans. The carport's still there. The firing range is still there. This would also require owner's relocation costs and contingencies. The cost estimator has an anticipated cost of 18,873 for a new building. Adding contingency, soft costs, and relocation, you're now at 26,3 to 29,3, taking the existing building down and building it up. And I provided the summary to the town. This is a spreadsheet summary, which gives you option A1, A2, and B by breaking it into those components of hard costs, soft costs, relocation, contingency. But remember, we had a range of contingencies. We had a range of soft costs. This gives you a high and low, define how those highs and lows were previously described. But it's, it gets to the same conclusions. You go from a low range of contingencies with the option A1. You could be in a project of 14,6, anywhere to a high of 29,3. And that's looking at the entire potential for 174 South Avenue.
So we asked each firm to plan on 45 minutes for presentation and then another 45 minutes of questions. But I think, why don't we see if we can do a half hour of questions if we have to go over? That'd be fine, but so however we want to, you know, actually, there's no protocol. I suppose just raise your hand. Those who are on remotely, Tucker, who's going to monitor?
Well, before I conclude, I would like to thank the building committee for their assistance, too. All of this has been fed into the building committee. Comments have been received and returned from the building committee and from the police department. They've been diligent from March in trying to put together a solution for South Avenue. I wouldn't be here presenting this if I wasn't confident in the solution also. It met the objectives of the police department, meets the objectives of the needs assessment. And I think I've tried to accurately give you some cost information. Costs right now are all over the board. Supply chain problems that we're seeing, COVID-related problems, material costs. The costs that I've just presented have all been escalated to a construction start of 2022. So that's factored into what you're saying for costs. If anything beyond 2022 timeframe, all the costs would then have to be reevaluated. But it is, it does have escalation into those for spring and next year. But it is, it does have escalation into those for spring of next year.
If I could ask the first question, Brian, if we made a decision by December. Which way we're going, how long would it take you to do the architect design work for the renovation?
I would anticipate six, six months for design, a couple of months for bidding. We also would recommend a construction manager. So at the same time, a construction manager could be overseeing our design efforts. And there's a potential to get it bidding out before we're entirely done.
And a construction manager's cost is in your estimate.
It is.
Yeah.
I just a question, well, first a comment, great job, this was really a thoughtful summary and extremely helpful. I understand you, option A1 midpoint 15 million, option B 2X almost, 28 million, okay. It's a big difference. My question was the whole wet abatement PCB asbestos. If there's one surprise in this deck, it's that's $65,000, I'm stunned it's that low, so how confident are you in that estimate?
I'm confident because this is just a reaffirmation of a hazardous abatement report that was done prior to our renovation of the second floor. So before we renovated the second floor, we had to have that report done and submitted. And the entire second floor was abated at that time.
Okay.
So anything that we were touching during that upper floor was touched. Anything that was on the lower main floor may not have been touched. Wasn't part of our scope of work. But it was identified in that 2006 report, so this just verifies and confirms what we had already really known about in 2006.
Okay.
How important is it that this building is designed as concrete between the two floors? So there's no airflow between the floors in terms of how you renovated.
There's a really efficient mechanical systems out there, energy efficient mechanical systems. We do need to bring fresh air into these facilities. But we can do it in a very much, much more efficient way than they're doing it right now. And on top of it, well, all the mechanical systems that you see within the cost that's submitted in this renovation would be new. So that gets back to our renovator's new concept, we're not leaving any of the mechanicals other than the boilers that were just replaced. We feel you should retain the assets that you already have in that building, you just renovated the boilers. When those boilers find their useful life, then's a good time to replace them. But it's a relatively new boiler that were just placed and in addition to that, you just converted those boilers from fuel oil to natural gas. So you just replaced the burners on those not too long ago. All that's new equipment. So new mechanical systems throughout the building will provide the comfort and the fresh air requirements that would be required by.
Kathleen? Kathleen?
Thank you, Brian, I really appreciate the work that you and the whole team has done. Just two questions, you so kind of mentioned that I think it was 2006. That a new roof was put in, I think it was a slate roof. And then subsequently that roof was replaced, I don't know if that was replaced with another slate roof, but if you just kind of, what is the expected lifespan of that existing roof now that you have?
We did not do the replacement of the roof in 2006, we repaired the slate. So since it was, since the slate was repaired. We've been told that that roof has been replaced with another synthetic slate like product. It, we didn't, we weren't involved with that project and I don't know the exact date. I don't know. Might know the exact date on that reboot thing.
But it's in good condition and how long we expect it to last?
I would say you have another 20 years out of that.
And then what, I think last question, in terms of the needs assessment and looking at the renovation either A1, A2, or 18. Does the creation of the additional space in total in terms of accommodate what the police department needs? Or say the next 10 or 20 years in terms of what they think about in terms of people's space, technology, et cetera?
I think that's a good question for the police department. I know that we've had this discussion, I don't want to speak for them, but based off of what we outlined in the space needs assessment and what they, they did have input into this. We've met the goals of this needs assessment.
And what's the date on that?
This is November of 2018. So this was our guiding document on what we were to implement. I think we've made enhancements. Because of this needs assessment, it talked about a training classroom slash EOC. We've provided a training classroom and an EOC. Which could be a secondary training classroom. So there are some things within this that we've actually enhanced for features. I don't think there's anything here that, there's nothing in this document that we've eliminated.
Okay, Penny? Why don't we, we'll do those who are present first and then we'll go to the remote folks.
Over the years, I've visited the building and had little tours and listened to the commentary about the space as it exists in the building. And not having had time to digest all these designs and the difference between renovated, new or demolish and do a new building. If you're renovating as new, are you really sacrificing the needs for today's kind of space because you are working with existing walls and stairwell conduits and so forth? As opposed to doing a brand new building which is utilizing new ways of thinking of space utilization?
Good question. The building was originally designed as an educational facility. That we can't take out of the building. You still have wide corridors, you have big stairs. You have some inefficiencies just because of the structural walls that you have within the building. So when you have a option, an option to do a new build. You can get some increased efficiencies. For instance, when we did the summary and we created net and gross square feet. We came up with a net to gross factor of about 1.57. Might not be, that might not mean anything to you, but for us as planners, that shows me I'm a little inefficient in the plan. That's because I have wide corridors and big stairs and fat walls and I want to be more about 1.35, not 1.57. So yes, I can make the plan a little bit more efficient. But if I'm talking about the spaces within the building. Chief's office. It's going to be the, it's going to, the amenities of that office are going to be the same whether it's renovated or whether it's new. The size of that office is going to be similar whether it's renovated or whether it's new, because we're going to renovate it as new. So the size of the spaces, I think is what's important. The overall building, yes, it might be a little inefficient. But you're getting at a cost that may be favorable in the spaces within the building. Would function just fine and properly.
For example, you have some wasted space, you have the stairwells at either, either end.
What makes it inefficient, a little inefficient, a little wasted space. We're going to work around that the best we can, but I think you'd be very satisfied with the end result.
Amy?
Right, one question in consideration was that there has been water issues in the lower level. And the whole premise of this is renovate is new, can you fix that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it's been addressed, it's been addressed in the cost estimates that you now just been presented. And what's been happening, I talked about the porosity of the brick. But also the lower level of that building was not underground when it was originally constructed. It had a large stair that went from grade up to the front door. All those stairs are gone now, they raised grade across the front, the entire front of the buildings. And submerged the brick which was exposed. Water's getting into that area and it's getting through the front wall. So within the cost estimate, we have excavated from the exterior, addressing that waterproofing from the exterior building, backfilling the building and then addressing water infiltration. But we have seen pictures of the building when it was first constructed, it was, it was quite elegant, but it had a massive front stair that went up and in. Those stairs are gone. That answer your question?
It did.
Questions? I'll have one more quick one if it's okay. So on the state of Connecticut map, a lot of police logos. How many renovations like this have been done and to what success?
All my projects are success.
Well, sure. But a hundred year old building and I appreciate that, but just of this size and this renovation.
Renovate versus new is probably 50/50. I'm at, I'm at.
Okay. And the renovations in terms of just lessons learned, it's a great tenant for us to know if, if that's the but just in terms of the surprises and everything else with things like that, things like water, all the rest of it that happens and we all know what can happen with renovations with hundred year old buildings, so.
And, and there's been a combination of renovate while occupied and renovate while vacant.
Sure.
As I said, that that I mentioned that the committee went and toured. I think the, the costs for relocating are real. And some of the communities because of the extent of renovation and they didn't have swing space capability. There's a lot of other factors that made other communities feel that they could vacate. North Haven, they seemed to vacate because they had a senior center across the street, which was a former school. A lot of vacant space, they had a solution. They knew the solution and the solution was staring at them right across the street. So there was a easy decision for them to just cross the street and utilize an old school for that purpose. It was cost for dispatch relocation temporarily. And they utilized Camden for prisoner processing detention. They didn't have to build themselves and do that, they went to Hampton. For the duration of the construction, you have to think about those three components, dispatch, staff areas and prisoner processing, those three components, if you could satisfy those three, they don't have to be at the same location. But they went to Hampton.
Sure, okay.
Brian, there's certain code requirements today like hurricane windows and earthquake proof building. How does, are we compromising any, any of those requirements?
Not at all, this has to be 100% code compliant. Code has a requirement in it that classifies these buildings as essential facility. In quote, essential facilities, these are facilities within your community that cannot be compromised in a natural disaster. Something was to come to Darien as a natural disaster and you want your police departments, fire departments, hospitals, all to be up and operating and surviving a natural disaster, that's why the code requires those buildings to be essential. So these have to be designed to hire wind loads, hire snow loads, hire earthquake loads, yes, we have seismic requirements in the state. Because you have a Masonry building here that, that's well built. That goes a lot for satisfying a lot of those essential facility code requirements, but yes. Our structural engineer would have to stand by the fact that this is an essential facility at times.
Kathleen?
Mentioned Brian that the EMS building is obviously essentially tied to communication, sanitary, et cetera. Or option B, the demolish, demolish and build new, I assume you've already estimated what would have to happen with EMS building. Would you still envision creating almost standalone facilities for EMS? Or would they also be tied into the new?
I think we'd have to make them standalone. Because if we're taking away their lifeline, which is what right now, we would have to make them self sufficient first. Only then could we tear down the police department, so a lot of utilities would have to be implemented at the EMS. It's all exterior work because it's all coming from the exterior. There's also mechanicals, I think, that was planned to be replaced in the EMS, the, within the capital.
And so those additional costs are baked into your action.
Yes, they are.
It's soft costs. Hard costs.
Hard costs.
Yeah, okay.
We're already planning to replace the heating system with the heating system in the building. But the, the, probably the biggest challenge is the technology, the communications, because the antennas are on the roof of the.
Brian, you talked about the bricks and the porousness of the bricks, wind swept rain and stuff. I think, I know we can fix it going forward, but do we need to fix the bricks? From what's happened in the past, is what I understand, we don't have to do anything, was that going to be?
In the rear, you do have some spalling that's occurred in it, within the Masonry reports, the back edition has been painted, painted white. And the paint that was utilized is not the proper paint because it's holding the moisture into the brick. Not letting it but there's some spalling that's happening that's localized in the back, the recommendation is to strip the paint off. Put a proper breathable coating on the back. And then the brick could breathe, it would get, if it has any moisture, the spalling would, would not reoccur.
We don't have to replace bricks?
Not at all. That building's been there a long time, it has a lot of life left in it. Maybe we can fix the porosity of it, it's, it's going to last a long time with the paint.
How do we go to Victor, Victor's been on for the hand up?
Yeah, my question is about the, I'm basically, I'm not convinced that $2.3 million of incremental spend for a firearms training range is a good use of taxpayer dollars. And my question is, what is, what percentage of police departments that you've worked on have their own firearms training range?
Firearms training ranges, I would say to answer your last question first, it's only a small number of police departments that we've worked on have standalone firearms training ranges. That being said, Darien that we renovated, we did implement a range and the problem we're seeing for a lot of departments is outdoor range options are going away. And if your outdoor range options are going away, you have to find an indoor range option. So if New Canaan has an indoor range option. That can be utilized. But many departments are finding those options are becoming harder and harder and harder to find. We can talk of regional ranges, regional interests and bringing other departments together into this range construction. I think more and more the police departments are finding this is a, this is a problem that they have to solve locally. Whether it's an adjacent town providing their own or maintaining their, their current training procedures. It's important for the department to be proficient in firearms training. It's just, it's required for certification, it's just how do you go about and get it? And providing a onsite solution means that your officers can take and not leave for training, there's a cost for that. But yeah, it, it's a problem. And what solves it for the town of New Canaan, it's up to determine that.
So you mentioned that very few police departments that you, you've worked with have their own standalone firearms training ranges. What is the possibility that we could use a neighboring town's firearms training range like Darien's? Does that happen with other police forces in the state?
I think I'm going to defer that to the police department.
Chief, do you want to address that?
I can clarify, add on to Brian's question, I think it's a little bit question would be posed in a way that Brian maybe didn't answer entirely. Every single police department in our area has their own range. This standalone range is a little unique for efficiency and use. And we do Darien range on occasion, but we rarely welcome when we use it too much and they would not be interested in any kind of long term arrangement. And I haven't found any department in our area that would be interested in long term arrangement for range. So that's a challenge.
We have had conversations with Wilton about sharing a, a range. But, but again, Victor's point is well taken, it's, it's some, some new buildings don't have ranges. If you have a solution elsewhere. Further questions?
Steve, just to follow up on the range, a couple of things on the range, one. The
Thanks Ben. Thank you, sorry, sorry.
So I, I thought that the range, studying it over the years, is such an difficult part of facility that. Not started for me, and I looked at it as if we go the nice range, we even have revenue opportunities out of it. And to me, over the years, when you add up all the costs, like training and all that, it'll pay for itself over time. So to me, it's a, it's a must in terms of whatever we do, I think. But one thing that the neighbors where we are are going to ask is, and they, I think anybody that's bought a home or an apartment or a condo near the PD is, they've all bought it knowing that their neighbors are the campus of EMS and PD, and they love it actually. They like being near that, they like the security, they like knowing where we, where they are. They'll ask us, what is the noise possibilities of the range? And I think it's important that you state that now, if we did build something like that on campus, what are neighbors, what are the activities going to sound or look like?
It's very much part of the whole equation. We just finished a range renovation for Trumbull Police Department. Their range had been out of use for about 15 years because of contamination. And we were asked to bring it back into operational use. We just completed it last year. It needed new mechanicals, it needed abatement, it needed a lot of work. The equipment was the concern for the neighbors. Not the firearm, the firearms noise was contained within the masonry structure, but your mechanical equipment is outside that obstacle. So they're going to hear it in the middle of the night, they may hear mechanical noises. So within the cost estimate, we did put acoustical enclosures around the mechanical units just for the purposes of abatement of noise.
So are you talking about air conditioning compressor type noises or is it?
What you have to create within the range is almost like a wind tunnel. You have to get so many CFMs of velocity over the shooter's shoulder so that contaminated lead would go down range. So it would return, get filtered, and then go through a series of filters so that air would get reintroduced into the range. So you're creating a wind tunnel when that range is in operation. That takes a lot of velocity of air, takes a lot of volume of air. So that machine has to work to get that air moving. And that's the mechanical noise. But the, we have to be concerned about that. Because they could be utilizing the range at 24/7. Neighbors could have their windows open in the middle of the night in summer, and they don't want to hear the mechanical noise. They don't, it's just, we can't change the environment from what it is currently. But there are ways with acoustical abatements of these units that we could get the mechanical noise.
I just saw us from shaking heads, do new police departments operate 24/7 with their ranges?
Right.
Yeah. Let's, let's get that off the table. Why don't we, I should have mentioned, questions, follow up questions can be directed to Brian through Joe Zagarski by email. Oh, but just, just so, any questions you have subsequent to tonight? Send an email to Joe and ask him to direct it to Brian. Or ask Joe a question, if you have a question, he can answer. Maria?
My question had to do with the firearm range. Is there a certain number of hours required by the state? Or I think you talked about certification, but you know, required hours that the officers have to practice so that it would? I'm just curious if it makes, if it just makes fiscal sense to have our own range because of requirements.
Can the chief answer that question?
Chief?
Did you hear the question?
Leon?
Can you answer?
Yeah, it's nine hours for three years, state minimum requirement. And we qualify twice, and we qualify twice a year. It's a necessary essential skill. And recently, the, how not having a dedicated range.
Maria, did you hear that?
Can you hear remotely? Any, any other questions for Brian before we move on? I'd like to thank Brian for the presentation, for the presentation.
Yeah.
And Brian can stay and watch the second presentation. And again, we now have both Chuck Boos and Eric.
Ross.
Ross, Racy? Boys like, okay, right. And they're going to present, we asked them to look at, we started with 52 town owned properties, I think it was short. And most of those 52 have a purpose in life, like a school owner or a park or a town hall or a firehouse. And we boiled it down to 13 locations that could conceivably house a police department. And we toured those back in February, I think it was, and we then set out a course of having the town staff working with Chuck and Eric to study the issues with the various locations. One thing we didn't do, and we don't believe.
It's not good.
We don't believe the, there's a private property that is two and a half acres in the right location. But if someone had two and a half acres in the right location that they want to sell for now in a reasonable amount, we certainly would look at that. But we didn't, we're not aware of that possibility. We're aware of a property that would be $5 million or more, but so. Anyway, with that, Eric and Chuck?
Thank you very much, we're looking forward to our phase of the presentation. By introduction, Castle Booze is a multi disciplinary firm that offers planning, architecture, landscape, architecture and interior design. We have offices in New Britain, Connecticut, and Foxborough in Boston, Massachusetts. And we currently employ about 66 people. Since Castle Booze has specialized in public safety programming and design since the late 1960s. First project we did was a new police headquarters in the city of New Britain. Since then, we've completed more than 100 public safety facilities throughout New England. More importantly, we've, we have current and relevant experience in the design of projects very similar to what New Canaan is contemplating. Examples include, next one. Beverly, which is a completed facility, Orleans, which is on the Cape, and Nita, Massachusetts Police Station. These are all relatively comparable, two of course are contemporary, Cape Town, you know, do contemporary designs. And we actually began consulting with the town administration about two plus years ago, studying a number of different sites that the administration thought was appropriate. They did not work out. And then early, well, late last winter, early spring, we were asked to do a number of studies of various sites of town owned properties. All those sites were visited and we went into some depth in showing the appropriateness of one site and the inappropriateness of other sites. The few winters that we, we settled in on about four sites and we actually did a fit of a building that would be appropriately designed for that particular site's configuration and topography. And Eric Rossi is a senior landscape architect with our firm. And he will explain that, that process and how we went through the site selection process.
Sure. So as both Kevin, Kevin and Chuck said, we started out with over 50 sites, the town started out with over 50 sites. We were tasked with looking at approximately, I think it started out about seven sites. But as things evolved, other options popped up and we ended up looking at 13 different sites in town. Most of those sites are in the lower two thirds of New Canaan. That's also where all your population is. And when we're looking at sites, part of this is all driven by the due diligence of the town and the police staff in that, okay, we've got a site over here where we can renovate or we can reuse the site or we could go to another site. And the advantages of another site are you move right in. You, you could use that, your existing PD up until the end and then the new site's done and you can move right into it. Also, another advantage of that is that the new site is going to be a lot quicker construction. That's just going to roll right along, you're not having to phase things, you're not having to work around other things. It's quicker construction, time is money, so that makes that a little cheaper. You're paying for actual improvements instead of paying for phasing and rent and things like that. So to get into it, we, we looked at all these sites and the first thing we look at are the size of the site. And the, how does a site works as far as topography? Is the site flat enough for development? Is the, are there buildings on the site already that need to be demolished? Do we have to do any mitigating construction to make that site work better? For example, some of the smaller sites that we looked at more downtown, to get the parking program that we needed, we would have needed a parking deck in those sites also. So we look at all these things going forward in these sites. What I'm going to talk about tonight is I'm going to talk about the individual sites. I'm going to get into the 13 sites or 12 sites that we looked at in a, in a little bit of detail and, and talk about how some of these sites were dismissed outright because they're just not feasible. Some of these sites are feasible but more costly. And because of the different locations, it's like some of these sites are an urban solution. For example, if we're downtown, we're using a smaller lot, we're basically developing that whole lot. Or if we're outside of town, we've got room to spread out, we're not putting, putting in a parking deck. We can, we can play with where the utilities are going, where the parking is going. And it's more of, it's less of an urban solution, so we're not building walls and parking decks and things like that. So I'll talk about that in detail and I'm, and I'm going to start this next sheet, which is our site selection matrix. And there's a lot here, I believe you've got this all on this tablets, I don't think anybody's going to be able to read it on the screen. I'll try zooming in. So these are in no particular order. What this sheet shows is a bunch of different colors, the red is less favorable, the, the orange is kind of mid range. Orange and white are kind of mid range, the green is more favorable. So I'll go through each one of these, starting from the kind of the least favored to the most favored. And again, I'm saying favor, the most selection of the sites that made yet. There's ones that work out better cost wise and layout wise. And there's one that work less, less well. So I'll start on the, on the right hand side here, we looked at the Locust Avenue Parking Lot. This is an existing commuter parking lot downtown, kind of kitty corner, across the street from the town hall. It's pretty steep across the whole site. When we first looked at this site, the, the site itself was too small to get a police station and a deck in there, a police deck. One of the problems with a, or a parking deck, one of the problems with the parking deck is that you have to get up and down on it. And whenever you have a ramp, it's wasted space, you're not parking on that ramp usually. Unless you've got the room to do it, and we didn't have the room in this case. So this site, we started looking at acquiring other sites around it. And it became more of a, this is one of the urban solutions where this would be kind of a redevelopment scheme. You'd be putting in a garage, you'd be putting in a building right on the corner, acquiring some properties so that that new building could go right on the corner. And it really becomes a, a really signature type of municipal building. But because of the parking deck, this is kind of, switch this one aside, because of the cost implications for parking deck, all the walls that would be required. So on and so forth. Property acquisition that would be required. Next one is what we call the O and O Bridge Road Site, this is up by the Historical Society. It's a relatively small lot and a fairly lot of topography going from one end of the lot to the other. This site was recently proposed for another development. But we took a look at this one, putting the police on there. And again, because of the size of lot, we would have needed either a lot of wall, they're very big retaining walls, or alternatively, a garage deck to make it work. Again, added to the cost, there are other things that work into the reason this was less favored. One of them is the neighborhood, it's a really nice neighborhood, you have to be a really nice police station. So the next one going on, moving on, Old Stamford Road, Waveney. This is across the street from the high school, it's a, and the Waveney Senior Center, and it's, it's a very odd shaped site. It's a large site, it's got all the space we need, but it's narrow and it's all over the place as far as the dimensions, a lot of concern. We couldn't get parking on there, we couldn't get the circulation or the building that we would need on there in a way that would make it work because it's such an odd, it's kind of shaped like an amoeba, I would say. Connor Field is, is a site, it's athletic fields that are just east of Sacks Middle School. They're surrounded on three sides by residential properties. It's a really popular athletic, athletic venue and is part of the, the middle school. This, because of that reason, it wasn't seen as a great site. It's got the area we need because of its location in a residential neighborhood, it was, it was not supported as going forward. East Elementary School. So this one's on the east side of town. East Elementary School, the school itself and the parking are on kind of a flat area. But there's some very steep sloped areas on one side that looked viable somewhat. But between the, the steepness of those slopes, adjacent water courses and environmental concerns as far as wetlands and an aquarium, water line, water pump station that was up there, that through that site, it was just totally not feasible. Police station on that site. Moving forward, another one was the Tommage Hill Parcel. This is a parcel of land down by the commuter lot south of Merritt Parkway. It's about a six acre site, it's got a water course running through it, it's fairly flat. I should mention that one of the things with a modern police station is that the location is less critical than you might think. Some folks think that the station needs to be centrally located so everybody can respond quickly from that location. A modern police station, most, everybody's out on patrol all the time and they're responding from their patrol location. So it's less of an issue than you would think. Or a site like this, Tommage Hill, which is on the southern boundary of the town. But looking at it with the zoning restrictions, the, the adjacent neighborhood, the being south of the Merritt Parkway and all the environmental restrictions with the water force and some other things that were on the site, that kind of threw this one out pretty early. Awesome. Next one is the Lee File Site. This is in Waveney Park, it's, it's the Lee File Site, big site. Works very well as far as engineering wise for a police station. You get all the parking, you get the utilities you need. The issues are the utilities need to come from a certain distance, there's not a lot of power or water or sewer in that location. So we'd have to come down the road to get to that location. But again, it's in the middle of a park, a very popular and loved park, so less, less desirable than some of the other sites. But I will show you some layout of that site. I will say that, though I'm going to talk about these 13 kind of quickly, I've got three or four that we actually did layouts for. We did layouts for the majority of these, but I'll show you the layouts for the three or four so you can see kind of what it would look like if it did. Moving on to the next site or the next page. Next one is the Waveney Park Site, and this is kind of over by the athletic fields on the, at the high school. We looked at this one just really quickly, we didn't even do a layout of this because Waveney Park is such a loved park. Waveney Park is such a loved park in town. The space is there, we, we could make it work, but having a police come and go through the park and the location in the park just was not desirable. The next site is a high school site. This is a lot that's just to the, I believe, the east of the existing high school building, kind of between the, the high school and the middle school. It's a wooded site, it's, it's not part of Waveney Park, but it's perceived as part of Waveney Park, because it's got the trails going through it, it's fully wooded, there's some vernal pools in there. Nice site, this site works very well from a layout perspective, it also provides an alternate route out of the high school, it solves that problem, to provide that alternate route from the high school to South Ave. The area is right, the grades are right. But again, the perception that this is a park kind of made this site less than desirable. And I will say that all the sites, no decisions have been made yet, but that's one of the reasons this one wasn't considered for. Next one is the Sacks Middle School Site, so this is right across South Ave from the high school site, right next to the YMCA and the athletic fields. This would take over that baseball diamond that's right next to the YMCA, take over that little sliver of land to develop a, a police station there. It's a flat site. We don't see any environmental problems with that as far as wetlands are concerned. Typical zoning restrictions, it would be an easy site to develop, we wouldn't need garages, we would just purchase land to do that. So, this, this one has risen to the top, I'll show you a drawing of this one also. Set, but that's the Sacks Middle School Site. The other site we looked at, Center School Lot. This is the site across the street from the library, it's presently a commuter lot.
No, no, business lot.
Business lot.
Downtown business lot.
Downtown business lot. The, the, the lot's location across from the library was seen as, as less than desirable. Again, because that's a business lot, it's been committed for parking already, we would have to net out for the police parking, the police building, and that parking that's already there. And the library parking to make that all work. So, that, parking-wise, unless we're building a whole storing deck for a parking garage, that one just didn't work. But it's town-owned, moderate slopes, it's, technically it's doable, but again, it's a, a, an urban solution, probably not desirable to have a parking deck in that location. Similar to that is the Lumber Yard Site. This site is across the tracks from the downtown train station. It's an existing commuter lot, as far as the train station's concerned. There's some moderate slopes, it's all a parking lot right now. Technically, it's feasible to get a police station in there, but again, between getting all, netting out all the parking from the, the commuter parking lot, all the parking that you would need for a new police station, all the circulation you need to get around that site, but by the time you get a police station in there and a parking deck, that it's pretty much 100% developed between a parking deck and a building. Less desirable solution, but technically doable. Next one is Vine, Vine Cottage Red Cross. That's, that's the building that's right across the street here, it's, it's a half-acre lot. Even if you added the three lots that are next to it, it's not by, it's just not big enough. Can't get the parking, you can't get the circulation, can't even get the building. So, that one hasn't risen to the top. And then this, the existing police station site, I'm not going to talk a lot about this. Brian talked about this when he did his presentation. The one concern we have, and I'll leave it at that, is just the adjacent buses. There's an ambulance farm on there, there's a daycare that's right there. They all work together for that lot, and, and parking, between all those buses and police parking, without a net. So, that's, that's kind of the summary. We started zooming in, and, and I'll, I'll zoom in on some of the, the layouts we did. So, this was the Locust Street Site concept, and this is the level of development we did for each site. So, we, we have a program for a building, we have a new building, we, we know the spaces that we need, or, or that are wanted in the building. We, we try to get a Sally Court that you can drive through on all these new buildings, because you drive through Sally Courts, that's more frequently. That adds to the circulation on the site. This will also, pretty much all the site off to the upper right is a garage deck, so there's another level of parking underneath that, and then you've got ramps and everything that go along that. Definitely, this would be an iconic building of the form, and then parking deck associated with it. But again, an urban solution, and cost associated with that urban solution, walls, parking
Does that assume you bought the two antique houses on the corner?
Yes, and the two lots on the upper right.
Requires purchase of land.
Yes, I assumed, but then I didn't.
Correct.
Next one's the high school site. So, again, I talked about this, it's a fully wooded site right now. There's the walking path that goes through here from Waveney Park. There are two vernal pools, one in the lower left and one in the upper right, that we would have to work around to get a site in here. Technically, this works great, you're, you've got your frontage on South Ave, you've got all the parking you need, and you get the benefit of that cut-through from the high school to South Ave, from the high school to solve some of the circulation problems from the high school. Yeah, then we also, because of the vernal pools and the adjacencies there, we, we.
This is the location that was designed to be the board bed building 20 years ago.
So, we think there's probably groundwater problems there also.
It's right on the corner.
No, this one isn't.
No, it's off the corner.
That one was.
That one was, right, right.
But, yeah, but the same piece of property.
There's too much identifiable wetlands up, up and out of the site to make it identifiable.
Yeah, we did, we tried to get the building up on the corner, just for the iconic nature of getting that. But pushing it up that way, we were impacting that for all the boards up there too much. Didn't make it desirable. And then the site that's risen to the top of the heap is the South, South Avenue Sacks Middle School Site. So, this site's fairly flat, it's an existing softball field, 60, 60-foot baseline softball or baseball field. Using this site allows us to get all the redundancies and all the site and mechanical systems that we need to get into a police station in an easy way. Generator could go on grade, all the mechanical equipment could go on grade. We've designed a, a range in the basement, so all the mechanical equipment for that can go on, and then, and we can design around that, that range to reduce any sound impacts associated with it. The field layout is, the adjacent middle school works out pretty well, we've been working with staff to make sure we accommodate that with this layout that's shown here. The field layout does work for soccer. What's shown on those fields now is lacrosse, but soccer's a bigger field, so we were using that as more of a constraint, but it works out. All the parking works out, and the circulation works out as far as that. There were some concerns about the, the view from South Avenue down the fields, and we'll show you our rendering of what we think that is a little later on in this. I'm a landscape architect and a modern architect, so I'm going to let Chuck talk about footprints a little bit, about what we would anticipate being in the building, starting at the lower basement level, and then working our way out.
The, the areas that are in dark blue are unexcavated. They do have buildings above, but they're not excavated. As shown, we have the range down here and mechanical equipment. We have the fitness area and the locker rooms for men and women. And that's all at the lower levels. The main, the main level is a public level. We have a sharper community room adjacent to the communications complex and IT, and plus the lack of parole division and detectives are there as well, and the Sally Court to the rear. Ample parking, of course, around the building.
And the community room would be the EOC as well.
Yes, the community would serve many, a multi-purpose function.
And, and just so folks know, when we were working with the department, the, the parking was driven by two things. The parking was driven, number one, by the, the change in shift. You've got, you've got permanent staff that are there, that are around at five, and then you've also got the police staff that are there, and it's the change of shift, the police staff is coming and going, where you need that parking, as well as where you need that parking when the community room is used for any public events. Folks are coming in there for CPR training or whatever. They have to park and get in there and get out.
But it should be noted that parking adjacent to the Y would be restricted to police, police, police vehicles only.
Right. Example parking for the public along South Avenue, and the, the, certainly the design respects the line, the existing line of trees that are there, which are really, really Oh, that's, okay, I'm sorry. Upper, upper level, again, we have the upper community room, which is a, a, a room which has a little bit more volume, and the rec, records, of course, and evidence and administration.
So, what would it look like? One thing we were asked to do was to pick up on some of the design elements of Sacks Middle School. So, that's what we've done through this design, it is a little more modern than what we show in other locations, but because the YMCA is somewhat modern next door, and the Sacks Middle School is somewhat modern, we're picking up on those elements, and that's where this design is coming from. So, that's the front. This would be the side facing the fields. Again, a front-on view from South Avenue. Overview that just shows the mechanical equipment and how it's screened on the roof.
That'll be adjacent to the Y.
Sacks Middle School off to left there. So, that, we want to talk about the cost.
Well, before you get there, talk about the baseball diamond.
So, one of the other things we were tasked with, since we're taking out the existing baseball diamond, is to relocate it. And the proposal is to put it on Connor Field, which is just to the east of Sacks Middle So, this is Connor Field, just to the east of the Sacks Middle School. This is existing athletic fields right now, and this is an existing baseball diamond down in the, the lower part of the screen. The proposal for the replacement, which has been coordinated with the school and with various recreation folks in town, is that this infield gets rebuilt as a synthetic turf infield, and that'll allow the additional use, number one, on that infield, and number two, allow folks to get on it in an earlier season. So, as a replacement proposal, propose to put a synthetic turf infield over at Connor in this area. We'll do a little clearing on that hill to the, to the south. Right now, that field is tucked up pretty well to the tree line, and stays wet, because it's on the south edge. So, if you get a little clearing, get a little light in that area, we'll dry that area out and addition a synthetic turf will make it even more viable.
Did you accommodate the two different sizes?
The, the thought was to do various baselines, so we put in a number of different footings, 60 and 45.
This is, this is where freshman baseball.
It's a mound difference between the one on south and bases. You're right, yeah.
So, it would have to be a portable mound.
Does it preserve the soccer field?
Yes, the soccer field would stipulate that, that's why it's just the infield that is proposed to be synthetic.
So, the Fields Committee met last Thursday, considered this, and also came up with the idea that if we turfed Sacks, soccer fields, that would be a huge addition to the program for the schools and for the youth sports.
It kind of, you mean, about all Sacks?
Two of the four fields facing South Avenue. So, now we go to costs.
Now, we go to costs.
Based, uh, we, we're, we're hoping that the, the, and we'll consider the, for the CM of, to build this particular project, we've found that very useful on most of our projects out there. And of course, these, these numbers include CM markups, et cetera. And the basic costs, construction costs of the building will be 12,000, $12,900,000. Adding the CM markup and the owner's contingency, we have a base cost of the building and site To that, we have to add, as Brian referred to it, as soft costs, and we've included all new equipment costs for the, the entire new facility at $2,306,000. Contingency for equipment of $184,900 for a total, possible, total cost of, a probable total cost of equipping at $2,490,000. possible total cost of, probable total cost of equipping at two million, four ninety.
That includes the range.
Yes. And the simulator, and the simulator and all the equipment that would. Now, there was some consideration because the equipment at the new, at the existing facility relatively new that that equipment could probably be transferred to whatever extent possible. That's to be determined by the equipment consultant.
Excuse me, do you mean the dispatch center? Is that what we're talking when you say equipment from?
Well, the equipment is range. It's the simulators for training and tables, desks, chairs.
She's asking about the current dispatch center. How much of the dispatch center could be transferred, consider?
Are you gonna, you're putting a brand-new one in here? We have a pretty new dispatch center.
Well, there's, that has to be determined because there could be a potential for relocating some of that existing equipment to the new facility.
Okay, so does this estimate include the dispatch center?
Yes.
The full cost associated with dispatch.
And owners indirect costs at two million, three seventy-seven. And owners indirect contingency of another hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred, which totals two million, four ninety-five, nine hundred for a total project cost of twenty-three million, five oh five, eight hundred. Line item there for anticipated sale of existing police facility with an unknown number because we don't know what that amount would be at this point in time.
Does that include the expense and potentially relocating the current baseball field over to the Connor property?
It does not.
It does not?
It does not. The estimate for that, we've been holding aside on a different number of a half million dollars to do that, which is a good number.
The half million, would it be including turfing?
Yes.
Are we done with the presentation? So we're ready for questions? Okay. You talking about the current building?
We don't know. We don't know.
So we've talked to real estate brokers and we've talked to developers. And it's unknown, but it's probably north of six million dollars, could be as high as ten million dollars.
Excuse me, is that six to ten keeping the building in place that the existing?
One thing with, with the analysis Brian did, if you can convert it as new for police use, you can convert it as new for residential use.
Did you say six to seven? What'd you say?
Six to ten.
Six to ten.
I thought those, I thought the brokers, that was for the property with the higher number was to rezone it, potentially rebuild and not keep the building.
All depends on how much, how many units you want to add to the back of the building.
Which is tricky because of.
So we've had discussions with the housing authority. whose mandate is to build senior housing as well as affordable housing. And the housing authority will be willing to sponsor a project as they are with Canaan Parish. So.
It's really TBD.
The delta is what, what's the property worth?
Could you repeat that again? What were you just saying? Because you're going that way and you're.
So we've had conversations with developers.
Yes.
Real estate brokers.
Yep.
And with the housing, housing authority.
Who's we, you?
We, our team.
Is that the Royal We?
Tiger, Joe, and myself, and we the real estate brokers say, how many units can you get there for housing and multiply by a factor as to what property is worth to a developer? You've said before, you sell to a developer for luxury housing, you know. We have an objective in town to have senior housing. And the housing authority is willing to sponsor a senior housing.
You know, we've got the issue with Lion Cottage, where we have the fire trucks coming in and out online. You've got Nixthack next door. I'm assuming you're gonna keep, we're gonna keep Nixthack where it is.
Yeah, because seniors like to be next to an ambulance. Again, the values, the values are there to the property in terms of the location, location, location. You know that slogan.
Yeah, but there's a value also to us putting the board of education there. And not selling the property.
Well, I suppose that's an alternative use.
What do you define as senior housing? You're talking about subsidized housing or just housing for wealthier seniors?
Well, since the P and Z Commission adopted a new rule last night that requires inclusionary, so we'd have to comply with that and have some affordable units for seniors in a moderate-income senior housing project. The, by statute, the housing authorities is mandated or able to sponsor moderate-income senior housing as well as affordable housing. So we've had that discussion with Scott Hobbs and Dave McCarthy. And so, you know, it's doable. We've had various developers go through and say it's doable. Just question, who wants to do it?
Yeah, I think for those of us who haven't been in the we discussions, it would, I think I was in a discussion with Bill Walbert and I think Micah Chen was the developer, which was, had a completely different, a more, a more nuanced tone to it. So to the extent that there are supposedly ranges, it would be very helpful to define what they might be and what might be required on the property because the property is complicated because of the EMS, the EMS easement and, you know, who we have around. So there may be this, but it'd be nice to have it written down.
Town planner has also looked at it. We've had discussions with John Goodwin. That's.
I know, but we don't have the benefit of.
Well, again, that's the discussion, that's the discussion. The delta here has to be what value to attribute to that property.
Right. And the question is, when do you sign something? Because a letter of intent, if this takes two years to build, poof, go away, the whole market could change. It gets complicated, right?
For this.
Well, again, if you're saying that a conservative number to plug in there is six million dollars, then we'll just start, we can continue with the presentation of questions based on your most conservative estimate of six, not ten million dollars. Can we agree six million and move on?
Okay. Whatever you say is going to be wrong. We don't know. It's okay.
Six will be wrong.
Right, exactly. It's okay.
Well, because he said it was six to ten, so we'll just pick the six.
I'm saying, I have no clue.
Yeah, right.
Three and seven, but I, I'm not sure why we're.
We ought to ask questions, Nick.
Yeah, why are we, why are we debating it? It makes sense. It could be one. I don't know that, we, I think it's a big TBD, isn't it?
I think it's a huge TBD. So who is working on figuring out the TBD?
That's for the Board of Finance to work on during the month of October with people we've talked to.
Had that become my job?
I don't know why I'm sitting here.
Hey, questions for the architects?
I assume you've looked at safety implications in putting a police station in the middle, in between a very heavily-used YMCA and the largest middle school in the state of Connecticut. And the, and the traffic implications and the safety implications, putting apart, aside the fact that you're gonna have a jail next to a school, which is interesting.
Actually, before you do that, Superintendent has talked to Bethel, which Bethel's superintendent. And Bethel built a new police station right next to their high school and their elementary school. And in Bethel, they think it's a plus.
Good, good for Bethel.
Yeah.
If he's gonna come up, he has to speak in front of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Leanne, do I have to speak for Mike?
We can hear you, but I don't know that anybody on the, online can. Oh, they can now. Okay, good. The building in the current location, I think, was thirty thousand square feet. How many square feet is this new building?
Thank you. Because the range is incorporated into the.
Big building. That, and that number was.
Is there an estimate included in, to making EMS standalone? Is there an estimate included in this to make EMS standalone? Like, if the building's gonna be sold, is there? Because of the sewer, I know that the heating's gonna be forty capital.
So that's an added cost. Yeah. If nothing else, you may not know it. It's okay, but we, that's, that's an open item.
I think it's probably part of the TBD in some way.
Definitely part of the TBD.
Right.
I mean, just on the cost item, the break even between A1 and this is eight million. So that, that, you need eight million for that building just to make it neutral. Is that, I think that's where people were kind of going on this. So, wow, that's okay. Okay. Yeah.
I think the, the new building has a lot of advantages. Certainly, it will be a, you know, a fifty-plus-year building, fifty-plus-year solution. Plus the fact, you know, new construction certainly can be by far more energy efficient, and that's the gift that keeps on giving. Easily look at the supplemental means to foster energy efficiencies such as geothermal or heat. All of that can be, you know, put very easily on a new building.
Plus, plus the real estate taxes to be gained from South Avenue building operating as a taxable billing as opposed to a board of education, which would be savings to the board of education budget.
That is true.
Thank you. Also, I also appreciate the work that's been done. I was curious on the fields. As I understand, I think the Sacks fields total about ten acres. And if that was the right number, how much is being presumed to be taken to put the, to the total three acres?
Three point six acres.
Three point six out of the ten. Does that sound right?
The interesting, that, that, the shape of that take is triangular, so it really doesn't impact the layout of the fields.
But you're gonna be taking, you're gonna be taking more than a baseball. I think we can all agree on that. It's larger than the, it's deeper than the baseball. So you're gonna, you're gonna wipe out two, three soccer fields for the parking lot and everything.
Yeah.
No.
Two?
Not at all.
They get shortened up a little.
It gets shortened up?
It gets shortened up. Right now, you've got.
So how is that not?
There's still FIFA compliant. So they're larger than the typical high school field, and they're still within the range of a FIFA professional.
And I noticed the fencing there, I assume that's a chain link fence. How high is that fence between the school property and the other school property?
Whatever needs to be and whatever is acceptable to the town planning. So we need some netting, some ball net in there. Probably some vertical ball net.
Chairman, then, so is it just replacing one baseball field or is it a baseball field and then it's?
It's one baseball.
One baseball field. And yeah, can we, in terms of the usage of baseball fields, in terms of not only the players, but also visitors and so forth? I think they park typically there along South Avenue and into Sacks. Do we have equal, equal an amount of parking available if they were to move over to Connor Field?
They can take advantage of the full extent of the middle school parking areas, which are better. We've heard the reports of people parking along South Avenue, kids crossing the street. So that was part of the reason for moving the field.
Parking is very limited to that field right now.
And YMCA doesn't allow parking for that field.
How much, how much parking space will? How big is the parking apron as opposed to the building itself out of the three point six acres?
It's, it's probably, area-wise, it's probably about thirty-six thousand square feet. That's just an estimate on my part.
So we're taking up thirty-six thousand feet of grass and putting pavement.
Thank you. Wouldn't you go back to the floor plan because it, because it really showed a whole lot of parking?
Yeah, and the public parking would be available on weekends to the athletic fields.
No, there was before that.
Well, it's eighty-nine spaces shown there.
I just, I have one question about the, looking at, this is a perfect time to ask the question because I drive down South Avenue probably two to three times a day. Those two driveways right there would be completely blocked at two thirty to two forty-five. I mean, completely blocked for bumper-to-bumper traffic coming through there. So unless we figure out a way to mitigate that, that's gonna be, that's gonna be an issue. I mean, it's, that's just from, that's my first take on this design. And that's five days a week.
But your concern is for police vehicles access.
Have you driven there?
No, I'm just saying, the chief, that's the chief and the deputy chief have to be concerned about operations.
And the, you know, the other thing I've heard from the public a little bit is that the YMCA obviously operates on, you know, a special permit that was issued, you know, decades ago. But this, the way this is laid out, I mean, we're literally right on top of what that is. So even though it's not in that particular zone, we're still encroaching in a way on everything that's around that area. So that's, that's another thing that I'm starting to hear about. So just be aware of that as well.
Well, we vetted our issues with, with the town planner and with the lawyers as far as the restriction. So I think we're, we don't have issues that we believe are any stoppers on that.
Okay, just putting it out there, Kevin. It's just, there's a lot of residents that live in that area. So just so you know.
I have a question. Is the LEED certification built into the estimate that you presented?
All the, the buildings we do are to state energy standards. And they are LEED certifiable, but, you know, to get the LEED certification, you have to pay for that. So you can design to it, but you don't have, you don't have to get the certification because if you do, you'll have to pay for it.
Correct. But have you designed to that?
Yes.
It would be considered LEED silver.
Okay. Has there been any traffic impact studies done on the site?
No, this is very, we're very early in the process. We've got a lot of rooms to jump.
Okay, one more thing. Is all the glass that you have on the facade bulletproof?
Oh, all of it? That would be something that we would negotiate with the police department as to where they feel they, they need bulletproof glass.
Well, you have a lot of glass shown on the facade on the facing side to South Avenue. And with everything that's gone on in schools and in public buildings, I'm just concerned about the amount of glass shown and the protection to the police department.
Again, the design is in a very conceptual stage. And all of that is certainly worthwhile looking into.
Maybe the question is, what was the assumption in the estimate you questioned?
The estimate would be, the, the lower lobby area would be certainly bulletproof. And in, inside the, any, any glass between communications, dispatch and the public.
And that would be already included in the estimate?
Yes.
So just to follow on that. So the assumption is this is built as a hard building, as police departments have to do. Is that the word we use? Hard building, essential building? So it's, these estimates are to whatever the standards.
That estimate and then the building represents certainly the standard of that.
Of what's required.
What we do throughout New England.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the move-down facility was opened about, just about a year ago. They got, I'm not, I think it was somewhere between five and eight hundred thousand dollars for that communication.
You know, the dispatch, they will give grants to for because it's their nine-one-one system.
If it was available to them, I don't know why it wouldn't be available to you.
Did we get money for that, Kevin?
What's that?
We upgraded it.
I don't believe we had money, Leanne. No. You know, when we toured Bethel, we were told that the. You know, when, when we toured Bethel, we were told that the state regards, they own the nine one one system in there. And that's why they, they, they provide grants for that support. We already had one in. We were, we were doing other upgrading at the dispatch, not the nine one one system, which the state really provides to us sort of our understanding from Bethel. Brian, do you know anything about this in terms of the, the grants for the?
Anything very limited. By a hundred thousand dollar range, it's about a conditional difference. That's not correct. Have either one of you or both of you considered having the range in separate location? Has it developed or the fields or somewhere else that's not part of this, doesn't come in issue both for the neighbors, the kids, the traffic? And is that you gain the space, reduce the cost, perhaps to be less in somewhere else?
I think their direction was to include the range in the, in, in the, in each case. So, you know, I suppose that's why we were talking to Wilton about sharing a range in property that would be somewhere in between.
I think that is a much better solution. For certifications twice a year, that should not be an issue. That should be, we should be able to accommodate that elsewhere and not let the room lose cost. I think that needs to be.
Just to clear, clarify, is it nine hours per officer per year or eighteen? You said twice a year.
Twice a year. It's three hours per officer per year.
Okay.
The state certifications are a pre-year period. That's the period.
Okay. It's a training facility too. So it sounds like you're using it an hour a day maybe with fifty officers.
If, if, I don't, I'm remembering back from here, I don't know that it did range.
Yeah.
You said a lot more than an hour.
Okay. But even if we're two or three hours a day, it's nothing like twenty four seven. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a handful of hours a day at most.
You know, keep in mind though, when officers have to travel to a range, it's not.
Ours.
Not ours.
Right.
That's overtime and stuff. So there's costs involved with not having the range.
Yeah.
Close by.
Portions, portions of the range can be broken out. The main cost of the range is mechanical equipment that fit out. You can make the walls. It's in a basement that you already have to build. So you can make the walls and then use the space for storage until you come up with the cash.
So Bethel built a new police department three years ago, two years ago. And they built the range, but they didn't have the money for the equipment. So they have a shell sitting there waiting for the money to do the equipment.
Along the, the range in the building committee, the police department building committee in the current site. And, you know, that's, everything's public on that. We, we did discuss in terms of as you go forward with considering the range or not. You can basically do a PD analysis and you know, somebody has to do that. Of course, it's, you have to make assumptions about how much overtime it is and where you travel. But this is something I think would make sense to do that analysis because yes, it might cost overtime, but against cost, but I know it is a challenge to find places to train. So that's, but it, it again, it's, it's the amount of hours you have to train is not huge, but I think we can, we can tend, put that to the side and look at it more analytically.
Questions?
One last thing. Have we considered excavating the current place, building below grade back to its original? Or any good reason to such expensive.
Well, they're gonna excavate the front part to, to waterproof the front of the building and then put, but there's no need to, you, you talk about going further down.
No, I'm just saying to expose. You know, no real benefit. No, no benefit. And what are you using now to make the brick less porous? What, what?
He showed it to us, beginning with a mess.
It was in my presentation, but it's a siloxane water repellent. It's a breathable material. So it allows paper to escape.
Judy's got a brick house.
It's siloxane, what's the chemical, siloxane?
Judy, you have a brick house, don't you?
Volume discount.
Good one. Good one, John, John Angle. Two points for John Angle on that one.
Any questions from people who are not present? Victor still here?
So just to, yeah. I think, I think on the previous presentation, we heard A1, A2, and B were pretty clear. And there's things to follow up on. On this one, I think it sounds like since it's a new site primarily, it's a new location. I hear town planner review, traffic pattern review, EMS cost, existing building sale, potential tax revenues, cost of the moving the new, and the baseball field. And I think there's some input on police department preference and the commissioner's point of view. So there's quite a bit of follow up on all the things on this particular one.
And the EMS.
I wrote, I said EMS, EMS cost, yeah. Okay. So I think there's a lot of TBDs on this is what I'm hearing. Is it the, the general?
And want to add the turf fields on there.
I did. Cost of the new baseball field.
The turfing of the, of the other fields.
And the turfing. Yeah. Very good. Thanks. Yes. Yeah.
If, if you're gonna do it, you're gonna have to write.
Okay. Those are all, that's right.
But you know, turfing is a recurrent, I mean, every ten year.
It's also something that's a standard. I was, I was at Greenwich on Saturday, the amount of turf fields that Greenwich has for their, their youth program on, on the weekends is amazing. High school and at their parks. So, so I think the, the turf committee and actually the superintendent likes the idea of having turf fields for the school programs.
I just mentioned that it's a recurrent budget.
The purview of the building committee? Is this in your purview? In the building committee? Is this building in your purview? Are you looking at the new site and evaluating?
We were initially getting taken out.
Okay.
But you know, one thing it would be helpful, so the building committee that was pared down to the current site. Um, I think, you know, Brian went through kind of the process we did. It would be very helpful for the work that was done within the town hall for people to know. You know, cause you said, we talked this, we talked to this, but we're not really clear how the process went. So if there could be a summary of the process that you took, who you spoke to, what was?
Okay.
That would be helpful.
Joe has put together an apples tab, apples comparison of the two alternatives. The three alternatives actually. And, um, but the additional things that Stuart and I have talked about as far as tax revenues and and further costs, you know, we can add that to the, to what Joe's already done.
That'd just be helpful. So we.
Yeah, that's, we've, Joe's done that for the benefit of the, of the board of finance meetings to come.
Okay.
Can we also look at the expenses that we incur with the board of ed building and the benefits and moving it to that location?
Uh, we have done that analysis. We can look at that as well.
Good. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Christian, to what location?
To move the board of ed to where the police station is now.
Which is a thirty thousand square feet and the board of ed uses nine, right?
They need ten thousand square feet.
Ten, nine, ten.
It would be board of ed plus something else because it's way too, it would be way too big. That's about three hundred thousand dollars a year of rent avoidance potentially. That's what you're looking at. So is.
So it, some feedback. I, I think the design, the, the, the building is, um, it's a nice design. I like it. It's better than I was expecting. Um, and I think you've done a really nice job of locating it in that location. But I am going to feed back that this location, uh, remains highly controversial. I think it is the elephant in the room. I think that we can talk all day long about a million dollars worth of price cost benefit and we can talk a little bit about features and ranges. But every, all of that is secondary to location. We didn't spend a whole lot of time. I, I, you know, you are, you spent some time going through the matrix. And so I can see the, uh, the carefulness of thought that went into fifteen locations. And, you know, you didn't have time to go into great depth as to, you know, why some of them were rejected. But I know that it's for, for a lot of us, we want, we, we probably want more information on, on why Locust Street, for instance, just to pick one of them, um, doesn't work.
Well, the cost.
I understand that the cost of acquisition, but you know, for some of us who want to dig in, um, to some of these potentially less controversial sites. So my question is, at the, at the end of all this is, uh, are we done with all the other sites? It's either, are we left with an A, B choice? This building on this spot or the existing location? Are we left with an A, B choice?
That's not a question for them.
Yeah, that's not.
Well, I want to know whether their analysis, they said that they came to, that they said in their presentation that they came down to several finalists, but we really only got, um, delivered one, the, the cost analysis of one finalist.
Yeah, the optimal.
And I want to understand what some of the other costs were for the maybe semifinalists.
I think what I, as I read this, there are several potential sites where the police would be okay with it. I don't think these guys can determine public opinion.
That's right.
And, and some of these have potential opinion, could be whatever. There's no way that filters their job. That's your job and our job, right? Collectively to sort that out. So I think if you said to them, I'd like to see an estimate for the lumberyard. They'll give you an estimate for the lumberyard. That, I think that, that's on us at this point. I don't think they can determine whether or not the lumberyard or, or the, one of the other less sites is, is politically correct.
What I'm saying is we've only asked them for costs on to the existing, which we heard in the first presentation and this, this one, we don't have costs on lumberyard, locusts, Connor Field or any other place.
We could do costs on the, on the other locations.
Sure.
If we wanted to.
Just spending money on, on that, I would get, I'm guessing you could if you wanted to. I mean, there are some here that were sort of on the gray area. Do you want to be in the locus lot or not? It's up to, which battle do you want to fight, right? I mean, that's the question.
I haven't even seen your presentation yet and the letters started coming in, in the last couple of hours. Just wanted to let you know, the letters are already coming in.
So I think if, if, if I'm guessing, if.
So locus would be, locus would be more like thirty million dollars plus.
Okay.
It's a, it's an urban development proposal for downtown. Soon as you start talking parking decks, you're talking major cost. Lumberyard would be a parking deck.
Okay. Yeah.
And if you look, look at the matrix, there are some order of magnitude costs at the bottom that differentiate the different sites for the costs.
How about the cost of Connor Field? I saw that that was objectionable to neighbors was the major objection of the Connor Field location. So why was, what, what was, what would be the rough cost of Connor Field?
Probably not much more than Saks, but then you gotta replace those, those, those athletic fields, which you could do.
It's a half million dollars. It was told us to us tonight.
Just the baseball, I mean, you talked about much more acreage there with the soccer field.
Okay.
And, and turfing.
I think if, don't guess. If, if, if you want other alternative sites estimated, I think we just, it's a question of asking the team to do that.
Not hard, not hard for them to ball, based upon the characteristics of the site, but.
The question is, do, do you want any of them? I mean, every one of them is going to come with more letters. They're very controversial. Every one of them's controversial. There's no way any of them aren't going to be controversial.
The difference is Connor Field has neighbors.
Like I said, I don't think the cost is the biggest driver. I'd like to find out what the, what location the community prefers.
I think it's where it is.
Is there any discussion with the schools? I know about the locating police department, you said they had discussions. But their views on, um, having the school property being you, you taken.
And we talked to the superintendent for several weeks and we talked to Katrina and I think the, uh.
And is there, I, I mean, we being you and the internal groups, right? I mean, whoever the we is. So what, 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 do you have, they weigh in?
I think they like the idea of a, an approved baseball diamond for freshman baseball.
Well, yeah, but do they like losing? But they, do they like losing that land and having a building?
If they had a purpose for it, my conversation with the superintendent was that if you need the property for a school purpose, then you ought to express that, right? And he said, well, if we need pre K, we would do it at West School. We wouldn't do it there. So that's, you know, that's the conversation we've been having.
Well, I'm sure people weigh in. So.
Can I comment? Uh, again, I'm muted with quarter finance here, but I feel like we're being driven towards one choice. Because, uh, it, it's almost predetermined that all the other ones are, are no good. When we haven't gone through the, the decision making. I've talked to quite a few people around town. I've yet to meet a single person who thinks that putting the police station beside the Y is a good choice. Maybe you do, Stuart, but okay, you're one.
Yeah, we've been talking to the wife for two months tonight. Yeah.
I, I, I think, I think we do need to take into account, uh, public opinion because I think it's going to be a controversial decision. And I think we shouldn't ramrod a single choice among all these choices.
I don't know that, well, I, I don't know that anybody's feeling any ramrodded. And this is three very different choices. And frankly, if you had to ask, I would take a vote in this room, it would be one A1 or whatever it was. I mean.
Among the, among the locations.
Yeah.
I felt like it was predetermined. You know, there was something wrong.
All the locations. Yeah. I think they did their analysis. I don't know. I, I, if the feedback, and I don't mean to take, now that you've given me this responsibility. I, 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 if there are three other locations, people want to see a cost benefit analysis with, I would say game on, do it. Why not? I, I I, and they, we see where those, where those come out. Why not? We just more, we can't have more data. It can't be a bad thing, can it? I mean, if we had more information, I just.
But the, um, the location on South Avenue where the referendum was for the BOE building, isn't that deeded just for educational?
That's.
The woods, you were the.
In the back and forth.
We had the referendum for the BOE building.
Town owned property, just like Saks is town owned property. It was given, donated by Mrs. Lappin for high school.
Right.
And as long as, I understand what the county attorney is, as long as the board of education approves the use of town owned property that is currently school jurisdiction, then that's all that's required. Board of ed has to approve it. No, those. No, not the box amendment. That's, that's the town council approval requirement. Yeah. But there's no deed restriction.
Yeah, no.
And we looked at the deeds. Mike Benevento. Their, their, new Canadian baseball, Mike Benevento for the, is in favor of this plan for athletic, for the baseball diamond. And they love the idea of turfing some of the soccer fields. Well, it's, 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 it's actually part of the.
Do that Tuesday.
We can also use ARPA funds for. Right.
Kevin, no soccer player likes to play on turf. Yeah.
Well, I should, again, the, the standard today, these days is to get the, you get early usage, you get a lot more usage. And I'm not sure that's true. They, they, all the soccer, all the competitive soccer games we played at Wavy Park fields now.
Not today's agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah. And ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Or nine thirty. Um, how, how do we proceed forward?
Well, next step is the board of finance to begin to look at cost alternatives.
Well, I like it. I'm hearing that there is some interest in other sites. If that's the case, I would say, and I don't know how you select them. You've got twelve or thirteen of them here. Is it those or others now?
Well, would you be interested in a thirty million dollar project?
It is what it is. If it's thirty, it's thirty. We'll all look at that very carefully. And I can see Neil telling me we're not spending thirty million dollars pretty fast. So I'm, I'm not too worried about that.
Besides the delay factor. I mean, to do locus would be like, we can do it three years from now. By the time you acquire land and you plant it.
Right.
There's other considerations that come into play. I, I think the police would like something they know that two years from now we.
Right. I think that's important to consider. That's right. I, I mean, that maybe, that maybe the other question really is for everybody is after listening to all this, does the other solution make more sense? Just renovate as, you know, the, in the current facility. And then it's a question of, um, do you do it with the, um, you know, co-located or do you move out? I think those are questions that really the police department has to weigh in on.
So we have a, a building committee set up, uh, which has a meeting in two weeks. And we thought this, there's some cons about the current plan for renovating. It's new, that has to be considered. I mean, it's doable, but I think the cons have to be on the table as well.
Yeah.
And as far as the advisory.
But that's you. Yeah. You guys, you're doing, that's, that's starting to pull together the pros and cons to evaluate that from the building.
We didn't have this proposal. So we had no ability to comment on anything.
Right.
So now we do.
Now you have some facts.
And I will say, I think when you talk about cost, uh, time is money and, you know, acquiring properties is difficult too. I think, um, there is, you know, you do, you have to consider the time element for people digesting the concept of putting and approving, uh, a new building right next to the high school. I mean, I don't think, I don't think that's a quick process. That's, you know, so in terms of the, the goal of being to get the police department to finally get a renovated building, I, I do think these changes in the locations would be slower, assuming it's, that's just my opinion. Cause I think there's, it's, a lot of people are concerned about that potential location.
You, you know, that's a big issue. And by the way, gentlemen, thank you for your input tonight. You're kind of put in a tough spot and I'm sorry. kind of put in a tough spot and I'm sorry for that, but um, you know, I I've been on the Board of Selectmen since two thousand eleven. And we were talking about chief, um, your predecessor, talking about doing a rehab renovation of PD then. It's now twenty twenty-one. Um, I, I think keeping it where it is, sounds like a good plan. I, you know, I would vote for A1 tonight. And we could get digging, you know, as soon as possible. But I I just do, I do see any change in location, whether it's um, X to Y, which I think is completely untenable politically and 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 it shouldn't be anyway because aesthetically, that's important to, to people from New Canaan. Um, but I just think that time is, is of the essence and we've got to get these guys a new, a better police department.
One of the interesting things we learned is that the break even, we would have to sell the existing building for eight million dollars is probably the range of what would have to be sold for. And then there is the tax income. That is legitimately a math, math equation. So
I just had a developer, I won't mention his or her name, say, told me that six million is high.
Okay, well, again, who knows? That's a developer. They have an, they're not gonna give you the biggest number there, Nick, you're gonna but it, it, the point is it's a, it's a math equation, but the math may say, let's, yeah, let's sell it and build it up. But there's the other side of it, which is, does the town have the stomach for going through an entirely new location? And that's what's, I think that
Just to save money, right?
Well, may not even save money. Might, might not save money. So it might be the unique solution of being more expensive and unpopular. So that's not a good outcome. Well, how do, again, we, we will do our side on the numbers and we'll go through these proposals. I think we have to fill in some TBDs. I think there is a question though, and I don't know that, if that's you to say, if you and John want to talk about are there some alternative locations that we ought to size? They are, the numbers are what they are. I think everyone agrees they'll probably be more expensive, not less, but it, that's does this body want to hear more options? And to your point, Colm, and it's fair. I mean, do we want to hear more options or or do we, or do we not? I think we're seeing yes.
John has said it.
Yeah. So everyone wants to see more options. Okay. Well, can we have a process for which we do that and identify them and
Well, I think if we did two or three.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think we have to exhaust all fifteen, but two or three, I think are worth digging into a little bit deeper. Um, because as Colm said, um, we can't just present the an A B choice uh, to, you know, to the people and say, we figured this out. This is the only alternative location. We have to give them a little bit more uh, explanation.
Okay.
On why that is.
I think that makes sense.
Economics is one of those, I think, um, wetlands, invernal pools is another one, zoning is another one.
You mean for filters out?
Yeah, we, I I think maybe two or three can meet those tests.
Yeah. And Paul, and I have to say, the, if the police say it's a nonstarter, it's a nonstarter, right? I mean, they, they, they have an opinion here too because they have to do their job. So there are some here where it seemed improbable for, for the police, but uh, okay, to, how do we create those two? Is that something you and John want to propose back to the group?
Uh, I think between Joe and and Tiger and uh, Stuart, John, we can figure out which two or three to put on the table.
That looks, that sounds good. And we'll do the numbers on the things that we can do our numbers on for our meeting.
And I just want to be clear, um, chief, if you understand it, uh, both options would provide you the facilities you need to operate well. I mean, they'll be different. But I, you know, because I know we kept asking this in the building committee, does this work for you? Does it get you what you need? I just want to make sure both options meet your needs. They're differently, but they'll meet, meet your needs.
The reality is renovated has new concern in here, inefficiencies in the building and certain things that aren't optimal. A new building somewhere would be entirely all over. Renovated has new needs, ninety, eighty percent of them.
Oh, wow.
That's pretty good.
That's pretty good. That's pretty good for a fourteen million dollar difference. We'll take that. Excellent discussion.
Okay, I think we've concluded tonight's agenda. And we, all three boards, we move to adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Derek.